Good evening. My name is Paul Sekinger. I am a design engineer. I work for MDP. And my responsibility is to design the station. And my goal tonight is to show you a little bit of what the station is going to look like, what goes into the design, and what we're actually planning on putting there. As you can see from our presentation, it serves as a custody transfer point between the MDP system and the Transco system, known by Williams. And basically, the station will consist of measurement equipment, filtration equipment, and pressure control equipment. There is no engines, there's no compressor, compressors going at the station. This is just custody transfer between our pipeline and the receiving pipeline which is transferred. Safety is our number one priority at ECT MDP. Every meeting we have, every step we preach safety. And this station is no different. We are designing the station required by the federal government, designed to DOT 192 and also PHMSA, which is the Pipeline Hatters Materials Safety Administration. Those are the minimum guidelines that we must follow in designing these stations. And you know, guys, there's thousands of these stations throughout the country, throughout the area that I work in. You know, there's places where custody transfers taking place all over the place, where you're measuring the gas and controlling the system that downstream does. So this is just another one of the stations. I've been doing this job for 34 years now, so I've been in this business for a long time. And like I say, it consists of gas conditioning, flow measurement, flow control, and overpressure As we discussed earlier, the station dimensions at 300 by 285-foot area that will be fenced in. We use an eight-foot fence with three strands of barbed wire around the outside of it. It'll consist of five buildings. We have two very large buildings that will cover the control valves and the measurement equipment, protecting that equipment, and three smaller buildings. These are eight-by-12 that hold the instrumentation, such as the chromatographs, motion analyzers in the need of the measurement equipment and control equipment. The interconnect details, the design and destruction of DOT 192, which I already mentioned. The building will have flow control and measurement. And we do regular maintenance. We're required by code to, you know, inspect our equipment, test it, make sure it's operating properly on a regular basis. And we also have real-time monitoring. And not only real-time monitoring from MDP, but from Williams also. Both gas control departments will be monitoring this station remotely 24/7, so they know exactly the pressures, the valve positions, the measurement, the flow control. Everything is pretty much automated in these stations. Overpressure protection is the keystone of our industry. Overpressure protection is primary. We used to do overpressure protection by relief valves, but relief valves blow gas in the air and cause public nuisance. We now put a monitoring device. So we put a primary device for pressure control, then we put a secondary device. His job is nothing but to, if the first device fails, the second device kicks in and controls. It's been a proven safety... And you figure how many houses, businesses throughout the United States, throughout the world, have natural gas into them? And the incident rate is very, very, very low. We have station isolation valves that will be remotely controlled by both gas control departments. So the gas control departments, if there is an incident at the station, they have isolation valves. They can shut in the station, protect the gas from coming back from Williams or the gas coming from the pipeline, and isolate the station. We also have automatic overpressure protection. No redundancy, we go into this station alone, where this is not controlled by somebody. If it sees there is an incident at the station or overpressured, it automatically closes and makes the station safe. And like I said, we have continuous monitoring for both gas control departments. Audits, we're subject to continuous audits for the life of the station, and they will be held by the Virginia State, the SEC, on behalf of the, or on PHMSA. This is kind of what the station's going to look like. This is the overview, and I'm going to walk up here a little bit and point some things out. This is kind of the station design, and this kind of looks pretty busy, but basically the gas will come into this area right here. You have your five filters on the end that side, and then you have your six meters, two control valves, and there's the automated overpressure protection valve, and it goes out to the transco. There'll be a building over the measurement runs here, a building over the control valve runs, and the three smaller buildings off in this area here that hold the instrumentation. We also use this new product, it's CAD 3D. This is kind of snapshot. This CAD 3D allows us to actually get in the station, to walk around and see what it looks like. Now, this is just another description here, we have your filters, your measurement, your pressure, flow control, then your overpressure protection, and out the transco once again. And this is a typical station. This is what it's going to look like when it's done. These big white things are the filters. You can kind of see the buildings, the fence around it, the piping is the measurement runs. That's a typical station design.
Thank you, Paul. So as Paul has mentioned, safety is the number one priority here. January 31st, we had met with, we conducted a safety and security meeting with EMS of Pennsylvania County about security and emergency response procedures. So we met with the Public Safety Coordinator of the Sheriff's Department with the goal of making everyone aware of construction, what's to come with operations, and that we will continue to collaborate with them moving forward. One of the ways that we'll collaborate is through emergency response plans. So we'll have one for during construction or during operation, which kind of goes in and out of the safety procedures and protocols in case someone is injured on site, in case there's an event after operations begin. So the number one priority of this is to make sure that EMS and the local sheriff's department are well aware of what the plans are moving forward on both construction and And I mentioned earlier that we've coordinated with VDOT, we've received the necessary approvals with the agency, we received our driveway permit, which is also known as an AMES permit, and our temporary traffic control plan as well for that location. VDOT, we've also entered into a VDOT agreement for identifying and remedying damage to public highways caused by interstate pipeline construction, as during and post-instruction activities. So if there's an issue out there, we'll be made aware of it, and we'll go address that issue accordingly with the roads. The anticipated traffic, anticipated traffic from Route 685 and Route 57 to Transco Road, on average, 15 to 30 personal contractor vehicles per day, that's just personal cars, dump trucks hauling stone during road construction. We'll have two to three excavators and one to two dozers brought to the site, and then when building the interconnect itself, we'll have approximately three to four concrete trucks per day for the first few weeks. So I just had a few photos here. This is actually standing on the access road to the parcel. If you're looking east, it's a clear, long line of sight. At the top of that knoll right there is where the actual turn-in for the Transco for Williams facilities. And then this is looking west, again, very clear line of sight, slow movement traffic on this road, so it'll create a safe, safe operating area. And then just closing, wanted to add some local economic benefits from the project. The annual added form tax benefits, once the project is operational, Pennsylvania County will be receiving approximately $1.2 million a year. That's a 10-year average, so maybe yours is lower, maybe yours is higher, but full comp of $1.2 million in annual taxes alone. The construction benefits of Virginia alone have approximately 4,400 jobs during deconstruction this year. MDP construction workforce, 100% union, 50% dispatch from local union, will have approximately $407 million in spending, which includes equipment, materials, labor, and services. This information was developed by FTI Consulting, put to the FERC docket, provided to FERC directly, and is also available on mountainvalleypipeline.info/ local-sonders. So we thank you for your time. If you have any questions, we may...
We'll get to the questions after we have...
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. First up is Mark Joyner.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mark Joyner. I'm originally in Pennsylvania County at Chatham. I'm the founder and director for the Association for the Study of Archaeological Properties, as well as being a consulting party status and intervening with the Federal Integratory Commission since the beginning of this project. I am speaking for a particular group, ASAP LLC, so I may go over initially just slightly over my three-minute period. MDP has not been honest with FERC or with our county representatives. Our organization had to update our county attorney with the proper information after hearing what MDP updated you gentlemen with last year. MDP requested on February 2nd, asking FERC for approval to commence construction in Pennsylvania County, claiming that all permits have been issued, yet here they are tonight, asking for a permit after the fact. In this letter, they asked to proceed from outpost 289.1 or 289.5, 301.6, along with six yards, 91 additional temporary workspaces, 11 other areas and points of intersection, one access road, and the interconnect station on Pennsylvania County without filing a single permit for these areas per our county laws. The proposed 50-foot easement is turned into a 300-foot wide swath cutting across our county. This is the length of a football field. MDP has not been given approval from the Department of Environmental Quality or the Army Corps of Engineers to proceed. They have not been given approval from our state Historic Preservation Officer governing all of our archaeological sites. They have not received the required permits from all of the counties and municipalities involved. MDP has not completed the archaeological survey along the entire length of the proposed route that is required by the Department of Historic Resources, all of which is required before they can begin any form of construction, which includes a rezoning and construction for this proposed interconnect station. They're using the term interconnect station, but in reality, this is a type of compressor station. MDP will have to be able to regulate and alter pressure of the transmission line before releasing into the transco line. This is inherently dangerously having MDP right next to Transco Station. Inadvertently, Transco has been having multiple accidents venting gas 250 feet in the air from their station. Whenever the pressures change along the line, as far as Houston, Texas, it blows their double and triple redundancy safety pressure valves, the same safety precautions that MDP is going to be using at their interconnect station. MDP representatives will tell you that they have complied with all regulations and requirements to start construction, but this is an outright false statement. FERC now has three lawsuits filed against them for issuing their certificate. MDP admitted in federal court on January 15th that they did not file necessary documents with FERC in regards to the environmental impact study that were required before FERC could issue this certificate, and that concludes the rezoning and is possible, but they won't build their interconnect station. They also lost the right to seize 296 properties in Franklin County because they admitted they don't even know the route of the pipeline as of yet. The town of Chatham has even refused MDP to cross town property due to environmental issues that were not known to FERC at the time by MDP to cross a landfill. This proposed interconnect station will be built on a property that contains a cemetery and 1830's house site, as well as other foundations that have not yet been studied. This site also contains a Native American site, which has not been fully studied. There's also a creek that runs between the Transco Station and the proposed MDP interconnect station, as well as a wetland habitat. The grading of this site at this time will stop the flow of this creek, silt erosion will destroy the wetland area, and let's not forget the noise pollution and the air pollution at this site. Their truck traffic will be crossing Chalk Level Road and Route 57 coming through Chatham. Both of these roads off of Transco have blind spots at the intersection of these major roads that have the potential for deadly accidents. They showed you the nice photograph of the roads on Transco Road, but they didn't show you the intersections where Transco comes into 57 or on the Chalk Level Road. The MDP trucks will have to turn opposing traffic exiting the interconnect station hereafter onto the roads, which they have not cleared with VDOT. They'll tell you there's no requirement for a 60-foot wide road entrance for trucks exiting secondary roads to major roads, but the Virginia State Police say otherwise, and they will be ticketing and fining them at every turn. MDP will tell you that they will be safeguarding these sites, they will not be destroying them. They will tell you that they will be putting up traffic safety signs. They'll tell you 101 items that you need to hear so that they can get their permit tonight. MDP should have to issue to the county and to the town of Chatham a $100 million bond that in the event of environmental damage, destruction, or of damage to any of the historical and archaeological sites, and that this money is then paid to the county and the town of Chatham to use as they see fit when MDP fails to follow the environmental guidelines. I requested their application for the rezoning of this property to be denied at this time until they have put forward a bond and have complied with all county laws and have been approved by all the proper agencies concerning our wildlife, archaeological sites, cemeteries, and our safeties on the road, and most of all, our clean water. Thank you, John.
Mr. Joyner. Mr. Joyner was allowed to go over his three minutes. Contact was five when you heard my phone go off because he was representing the organization.
That is the compression station at Transco. You can hear it pretty loudly. Their interconnect building, which in your package didn't really describe what they're putting out there. I looked through your package, saw the picture of one building, now they're saying five buildings. They don't describe what exactly goes in your building until tonight. I think that should have been in your package, but therefore y'all were not informed exactly what was going in those buildings. Plus, why does Mountain Valley needs to rezonate to M2 when Transco is M1? Why would you change A1 to M2 when next door is M1? What is so different about Mountain Valley Pipeline than the compression station already? They're a Transco. Transco has lots of buildings. They have an interconnect building. I have to read from FERC, since it was not in your package, exactly what is going out in that area. Transco Internet Delivery MR Station would be located at MP 303.5 at the terminus of MDP Mountain Valley Pipeline in Pennsylvania County. This site will include a gravel yard enclosed by chain link vents. Mountain Valley proposes to interconnect four existing Transco pipelines at existing Station 180, 165. Pipeline C is 36 inches in diameter. Pipeline D is 42 inches in diameter. Components of the ultrasonic gas meter runs, 4 16-inch overpressure protection valve flow control meter runs, 2 26-inch overall attached directly to Mountain Valley Pipeline. Immunity building will be enclosed. But I'm saying, why do they need to be M2? Transco's M1. Plus, there are health issues with releasing gas. All gas pipelines that you see have warning signs, do not smoke. Also, they have measuring stations for the air pollution, so these places pollute the air, pollute the land, pollute the water. I do not understand why M2 and M1. I think you should deny it, and I think more information should be put in these packages so we know exactly what they want. Thank you. Remember to know us.
Thank you, Ms. Dix. Sonia Ingram, Ms. Dix.
Oops, sorry. Sonia Ingram, I work for Preservation Virginia, the statewide historic preservation nonprofit. And we've been involved in the Mountain Valley Pipeline and the Atlantic Coast Pipeline since 2015. As you can imagine, miles of pipeline will impact hundreds of archaeological sites, historic buildings, cemeteries, and historic landscapes, and some of these are in Pennsylvania County. Preservation Virginia, the Department of Historic Resources, and many local nonprofits and individuals have been extremely concerned about the permitting and review process for the historic and natural resources. And these include concerns that the historic sites are not being surveyed and investigated sufficiently. And one of these is a site in Pennsylvania County, an archaeological site, a Native American site on the Pig River, that we believe has not been investigated fully. For the compressor station interconnect site, there are historic resources on the property, as mentioned, including a cemetery. We ask that the zoning be denied or postponed until the construction plans in relation to the cemetery are better reviewed. Very often, historic cemeteries are larger than they initially appear because they lack permanent grade markers. I also want to encourage you to research the proposed compressor station for the Atlantic Coast Pipeline in Buckingham County, and the huge opposition that this has had, and I think that may help eliminate some of the comments made by Mr. Joyner and Ms. Dix. And in closing, I want to encourage or ask that you look into the site on the Pig River and possibly request that more investigations be conducted there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ingram. Ann Rogers.
I'm Ann Rogers, and I'm representing Blue Ridge Environmental Defense League, and I live in Monah County. And I'll speak for a moment, and then I'll give you some literature. I respectfully request that Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors please deny the request that has been submitted to the county by Mountain Valley Pipeline for rezoning a property on Transco Road from A1 to M2 for the new interconnect. The firm that has been contracted to build the Mountain Valley Pipeline in Virginia is Precision Pipeline, a firm headquartered in Wisconsin. In January 2015, Precision Pipeline was contracted to build a pipeline in West Virginia called the Stonewall Gathering Pipeline. On June 16, 2015, the West Virginia Department of Environmental Protection conducted an inspection of the Stonewall Gathering Pipeline. During the inspection, violations of dozens of different sections of West Virginia legislative rules and the pipeline's permit were observed and documented, the violations. Later, I will share with each of you a copy of the April 26 report on these violations issued by the West Virginia Department of Environmental Protection. I will also share with you a copy of a report on the Stonewall Gathering Pipeline issued by environmental scientist Autumn Bryson in July of 2015. I toured the Stonewall Gathering Pipeline with Autumn Bryson and several other men in July of 2015. What we saw was deeply disturbing, literally for me heartbreaking, and all I could think was, why are we trashing our beautiful, irreplaceable Appalachian and Piedmont rural lands in this way? Why? Why does this have to happen? I would ask you to consider the following eyewitness reports of the Stonewall Gathering Pipeline appearing in Autumn's report. Do I have a few more minutes or a minute?
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds? Well, she quotes quite a bit of bailing silt fences, stream erosion, runoff. So I would ask, please don't allow Mountain Valley Pipeline to bring Precision Pipeline into the jail. Precision Pipeline does not appear to have the ability to build a pipeline of this size in a manner that concerns our streams and soils. And so please refuse Mountain Valley Pipeline's request for a rezoning on Transco Road.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. You can give them your questions. I'll be here later. Pass them out.
Mr. Chairman and members, good evening. I am Bonnie Law from Franklin County. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here tonight to ask you to deny or return the rezoning request from applicant MDP to rezone the reference property on Transco Road for a multitude of reasons. I have access and liability concerns for the public entering any type of proposed M2 industrial site of this nature when all they want to do is visit a cemetery. I just don't see how these two needs can be resolved when they want to fence and gate the property in, but the public has to have access. We have children to think about. We have mischievous teenagers to think about, older compromised residents to worry about, vandalism, terrorist-type acts to worry about. You know, it may sound good in theory, but in reality, it just does not seem practical to me, just like the water source issues on this property. What will happen here if an accidental discharge or contamination occurs? Who's going to report that? The owner? Unfortunately, we live in a changed world from when the original Transco was built prior to any zoning laws being in effect. Always remember that MDP is a shell company, a private LLC originated out of Delaware, no ties to the community, no brick and mortar anywhere, zero MDP employees, with no environmental bond or no engagement bond of any type and place. Looking back, particularly Dr. Miller, I think the Transco was built in the wrong place, and if we had it all to do over again, we may not have located that in the middle of an A1 agricultural and residential area. It would have been nice if it was put in a true contained sole industrial site. This was a beautiful area. Let's not compound a mistake of 40 years ago by making another mistake tonight. We must protect our agricultural farmlands, protect all water sources in and along this property, including any tributaries and the Native American heritage on this property that obviously requires further investigation. There are no state-approved air quality monitoring systems in place for the county. How do we know exactly what and how much of anything's been released in this area already? You know, pretty business people who want to do their due diligence would take steps to find out prior to adding any more missions in the neighborhood. A BCA member stated last week in the BCA meeting that he had great concerns about the proposed MDP project as a whole during any MDP special use permit. Also, the BCA chairman admonished citizens with a public dressing down who tried to offer information about the project they felt the board needed to hear and consider. I always want to say we just need to talk about a rezoning. I'm here to tell you, it's impossible just to talk about a rezoning case without addressing the entire project. They think they have a watertight door here, a watertight door there, and if any of it failed, it'd be catastrophic for multiple communities. It's ludicrous to expect citizens not to talk about the entire project. This property will eventually be touched by the pipeline project. This is the job of the board of this county. Do your due diligence here. Pretty people manage risk here again. This matter came to you with a 4-4 tie vote, with no recommendation whatsoever from the Planning Commission, even after 60 days. This is planning stalled. Send this matter back to them for further review, excluding Janice Smith, since her husband sold the MDP pipeline easement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Law.
I'd like to hand this to the board to start the call. I'm going to comment to hand this in in the break space, and I want to thank you, Dr. Bell, for upholding her law in that case. I'm hopeful Mr. Joyner has so many, so many comments at board listening to, I hope that he will find it to, find himself able to submit those comments so that they'll have them to look at at some point in time. Yes, sir. You are awesome with those. He mentioned a bond, which Chapter 29, our waste ordinance, is something that you should look at because there aren't going to be, there'll be construction debris waste, as law says, it'll be difficult to separate these things as we go along, and you can require a $100 million bond for this company in the event that something happens to life or property. You know, your water supplies will be taken care of. It's ridiculous to be given only three minutes. It's ridiculous to be given only three minutes for something of this importance. You've been handed material. You can't possibly look at all that material and take everything that's said and give it to anyone tonight. It doesn't even give you time to think. But they weren't even my comments. My comments tonight was to request that you deny this rezoning. It was heard by the Planning Commission, as mentioned, on November 9th. The staff code compliance, which I've got in these comments, says that it recommends that the Planning Commission review and make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. That did not occur. The Planning Commission said that there were many unanswered questions. There was a motion that was seconded, and it wound up a tie vote, which asked me to know 60 days later, and if you haven't had a comment, then it was considered approved. But Ms. Mees voted, and as was mentioned, she has profited from this venture with Mountain Valley Pipeline. Had she not voted, had she abstained, which she should have ethically done, legally, I'm not sure, then it would not have been a tie vote, and it would have been a vote to deny recommendation because of all the questions that need to be answered. There is no rush here. I ask that you deny Mountain Valley Pipeline's zoning request until the Planning Commission re-hears the case and makes a recommendation with Ms. Mees abstaining from the vote. There's going to be opportunity if you send this back to them for them to review everything. They didn't have this information here that you saw tonight for the recommendation. Could have been extra questions asked, could have been more information reviewed. So I'm hoping you'll consider denying it for now, sending it back to the Planning Commission, having another hearing with the Planning Commission, and a fair vote and more information on which to make this very, very important decision, more important decisions coming down the pipe, especially a use permit, is going to be interesting. As Mr. Joyner says, they have not got all their permits, even though they're parading around. Don't sell us short. Don't sell us short. At least give us the opportunity to do what is required and inherited.
Thank you, Ms. Bowden. John Gubek?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. John Gubek, I'm a lawyer with Gentry Law in Arvato, representing the Piedmont Residences and Defense of the Environment and Preserve Franklin County. They're both chapters of the Blue Ridge Department of Defense League. You know, I'm going to make a few quick points here, respectful of your time. You know, I can't underestimate, this is probably the only chance for the board to take action on an MVP land use decision. You know, the way this county sets up its land use decisions, BCA is going to bear the lion's share of the work here. You know, the BCA is always part of presenting with a special use permit application. There's a board to come after this. So it's an important decision for the board, given this is its only time to put a thumbprint, really, on land usage from the MVP standpoint. So what does that mean, right? So you guys know, good land use decisions are usually based on complete information. You heard prior speakers talk about some discrepancies about information that wasn't presented to the Planning Commission. My partner, Glenn Polley, addressed the Planning Commission and raised some of these same concerns. So my second point, why would you send this back to the Planning Commission? You know, we think that's a proper course of action, but why do that? Got to be mindful of the Planning Commission's time. They're all volunteers, respected, but you know, it's their job to come up with a recommendation, right? To bring a land use decision like this with no recommendation to the board, given the gravity of this decision, is not a good land use decision from the board's standpoint. So the Planning Commission can look at several things. MVP of the Planning Commission made certain comments and made certain promises. They supplemented those promises with a small list of proppers, but left off a few things they could have addressed and taken off the table that some of these speakers addressed. For example, they said to the Planning Commission that the cemetery be protected, but that didn't make it into a propper. They said to the Planning Commission that it would be not used as a compressor station. Did that make it into a propper? No. Talked about repair and maintenance of the road. Did that make it into a propper? No. Talked about security, that there would be no security concerns, that they had 24/7 security. Did that make it into a propper? No. So there's a number of things that, you know, the Planning Commission can revisit if they take this decision back up again. Now I'll turn to my last point, which is really the framework of the board's decision here. You've got zoning warrants language, you've got comprehensive plan. MVP pointed to two elements of the comprehensive plan. The truth is, the comprehensive plan is a cornucopia for this site. The staff report notes that comprehensive plan designation is agricultural, residential, RC. You pick one, and it's appropriate the comprehensive plan. So that's not much help here. So you can't really rely on that. So you dig a little deeper in the comprehensive plan, and you find some other provisions that are helpful, right? You all know the agricultural character of Pennsylvania County, right? So you talk about specific things in the comprehensive plan. You've got Community Goal Number Three, to promote the preservation of the natural and cultural environment for present and future residents. You've got the desire to protect agricultural land because it's integral to the county's past and future. These are all quotes from the comprehensive plan. You also have the need to minimize industrial conflicts with residential and agricultural zoning, and you have the pressure on prime agricultural farmlands. So this is not new information to you all, and you all read this every day. Those are some of the elements in the comprehensive plan that also cut against support of this application. And when you look at it, that's really what you all base your decision on, right? Comprehensive plan is a guide in terms of what is the best land use decision. The Planning Commission needs to lay in to make that sort of recommendation. Appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the public for making the comments. I think it helps the dial ball for you all tonight to make a decision. I would like to respectfully point out, though, that there wasn't any residences on Transco Road that made any comments on this tonight. The individuals that had the concerns, I would beg to defer that they might not even be from Pennsylvania County. However, the concerns are warranted, and I'd like to address a few of those tonight. The first one to address is the compressor station. This is not a compressor station. We're approved for an interconnect location. There is no air emissions that need to be permitted. DEQ does not require a air permit for this location. In regards to noise, that one of the commenters had on her phone, again, this is not a compressor station, but a noise study. We did our noise study, and any impact was not going to be any greater than .08 of a decimal impact increase. So again, there's no noise issues with this interconnect location. In regards to permitting, we have received all of our federal permits and our state permits. The only thing that's still pending in Virginia is the Erosion and Sediment Control Plan, which we anticipate getting in the next week or so, and one of our proppers was to provide that to the county once it's approved. The permanent easement of 50 feet, we have received, again, our DEQ required permits, nationwide, 12. In regards to the cemetery, we have consultants to go out, that's required under Section 106 consultation. And what these consultants do, they go out, look on the properties to see if there's any cultural significant areas on those locations that may be impacted. So our folks went out there, they found that there was a cemetery, and we submitted avoidance plan to stay away from that location. Fenced-in area, 40-foot buffer. We provided this to the state Historic Preservation Office of Virginia. They made no comments. Our Section 106 consultation is closed. There was no tribal or Native American artifacts found. And also, there is no environmental bond that is required by the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality, which is the environmental agency for this project. I've touched upon noise. Again, there's no air permit that's necessary from DEQ, as required by DEQ. The measuring on the locations for the volume. And there was comments made about the Planning Commission vote, and it's my understanding that the lady commissioner, madam commissioner, didn't vote at all. So I'm not sure what the issue is in regards to that.
That will take.
And then, let's see, again, this is not a compressor station. The road bonding requirements was not had as a propper because we had that agreement directly with VDOT. And this parcel does not have any active farmland on it. As you saw from the photo, it was just an overgrown parcel. So I think that I've addressed the majority of the comments brought by the public. Ms. Smith, do you have anything you'd like to add? I've just gone. So we're here to answer any questions.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing with 8:59. More? Questions?
Sir?
Yes, sir.
Did you indicate, I want to make my initial correction. Did you indicate that all permits have been received?
From the federal government's, yes, we have received those permits. From the state level, we have received everything. We received the 401 from DEQ, but again, we're waiting for the Erosion Sediment Control Plan to be approved. So with the first notice received, we can go out and hand-clear areas, but we cannot do any earthwork until we receive that plan.
And you guys received, have you believed your closing?
I'm sorry, sir. I didn't read.
Listen, when that comes, then you can break around.
Yes, and now I defer. Yes, sir.
Anything else, Dr. Miller?
No.
Anyone else? Okay. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, in case three, R-17-031, I am going to move to approve the request to rezon from A1 to A2.
I have a second. Second? Motion made by Dr. Miller, seconded by Mr. Lawber. Any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
I was only at a Planning Commission meeting. I didn't take this job to win any popularity contest. Contest is, contest, that is. It's a lot of pressure at times. This position had a lot of pressure on it. Let me clear up the misunderstandings of four-four vote. The way the wording from the chairman at that time, because health issues, he can't see sometimes and all, and I'm not being critical of him, I appreciate his service for many years. The way the question was worded was not very clear to me. There would have been a five-to-four vote, or five-to-three vote, because I was in favor of the Mountain Valley Pipeline, because I've done my research on that as well. But the other point was, I requested for a short recess, you remember, counsel? And I wanted to receive counsel from my counsel, but it wasn't okay. So I went under the misunderstanding that I was voting in favor of MVP, but it wasn't. It was against. So it would have been a five-to-three vote if Ms. Mees did vote. I don't recall that, but I know that it would have been five. It would have been five to carry that vote because I was supporting MVP.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Any other comments?
Just wanted to ask a comment. One thing that's surprising to me in all of this, I sat through the DEQ public hearing a few months ago, and there was not one county resident that owned property that was going to be affected by this project that showed up for that public hearing. Tonight, we have not had one person who's going to be affected by this immediate area that's going to be affected by this project, and to me, that would have been important input. I prefer to hear from those citizens that are concerned about the project, and not one person showed up. So I just wanted to clear that up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other comments? Roll call, Mr. Smith.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. Obviously resolved. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We go into public hearing. We propose revisions to Section 6-1.2A, 6-1.2B, 6-1.2C, and 6-1.2.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Please keep it down as you ask, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the public hearing that emanates from a previous work session discussion, and I see Mr. Shorter is in the audience if he desires to speak furlongs matter. But what this simply does is that it amends various sections of Chapter 6 of Pennsylvania County Code, and it moves perpetually going forward the annual tax payment due date for the first installment for county taxes from June 5th to June 20th going forward, and the second tax installment due date from December 5th to December 20th. So staff has the board to open a public hearing, take any comment, and then consider a middeals of Pennsylvania County Code to make these two tax due date changes.
I'll open the public hearing at 9:03. No citizens sign up. Mr. Shorter, do you like to address this issue or?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to briefly state while we're doing this, Mr. Paul, correct me.
Tell me about Mr. Shorter.
Briefly.
Briefly, tell us why you want us to do this.
I tell no one when it is here we talk. This was an original proposal by my office to move the due date. Originally, the original proposal was to move it to the 10th of the month from the 5th, just remove the traffic and the volume flow of tax payments away from the first, the beginning or the very end of the month, because there's already a lot of activity associated with the very end of the month and the beginning of the month. And it compress taxpayers that elect to pay near the due date, along with the people that were kind of forced into paying after the first of the month if they only got paid once a month. So it brought a lot of congestion into the office. Only once in every seven years do you get a full five-day collection period in the 1st of June and the 1st of December. The 5th has to land that once every seven years on a Monday to get a full work week in that last period of people getting paid at the 1st of the month. So if you take two days out for your weekend, we've got a three-day collection period after the 1st of the month to try to get all of this work done. So we propose moving it to the 10th of the month. Then Mr. Smitherman offered to move it even further to the 20th, especially for this year because of reassessment year and close to the 30-day notice to change tax rate and reassessment year, that we're probably going to need that extra time this year, and I didn't see any further complications going to the 20th versus 10th.
Like, Shorter, any other questions?
No, sir. Thank you, as well.
All right, we'll close the public hearing because no one signed up at 9:06. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I like this motion. This don't make the most to approve the change to perpetually moving the annual tax payment due date for the first tax installment from June 5th to June 20th, that's my pocketbook, and the second tax installment due date from December 5th to December 20th, respectfully.
Thank you. Motion made by Mr. Davis, seconded by Mr. Scares. Any discussion?
I'd just like to say I like the idea. I think it gives a taxpayer less than 15 days to pay their taxes, and it takes some of the work burden off, the work burden off the trade. I think it's a good idea.
Take this place. Any other comments? Mr. Smith, roll call.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
And a public hearing on proposed amendment to Chapter 36, reassessment of the Pennsylvania County Code. Mr. Hutt?
Yes, this is not deja vu. You all basically have done this once before, and it's back before you, because after we changed it before, I had a meeting with the clerk of the courts, and for their auditing purposes and the way they captured the money, we originally had $5 that was going to be tacked on to each criminal or traffic case heard in the court specified in the county, and that money was going to be utilized and set aside to help with the construction of any potential new department or justice center that we'd add. purposes and the way they captured the money, we originally had $5 that was going to be tacked on to each criminal or traffic case heard in the court specified county, and that money was going to be utilized and set aside to help with the construction of any potential new department or justice center that we'd have. They, under the state code, they wanted it, $2 will go towards this new Pennsylvania County Code, or the $2 will go to help to defray the increase in the cost of heating, cooling, electricity, and ordinary maintenance of our courthouse, and then $3 will be segregated to a separate pot of money, and that's because our courthouse is not currently in compliance with Virginia Courthouse Facility Guidelines, so $3 will also be tacked on to a courthouse to each case that qualifies for, and that money will be segregated just to potentially be used towards construction of the new Pennsylvania County Complex. So it was just a bookkeeping auditing cleanup thing that the clerk requested, so it accomplishes the same thing as you did before, it just separates the $2 and the $3.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I'll open the public hearing at nine ten. No one signed up. Close the public hearing at nine eleven. Board's pleasure.
I make a motion that we adopt the reassessments as presented in Chapter 36 of the Pennsylvania County Code as amended by the county.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Lawber. Any discussion?
Just want to make sure I understand this, Dave. Instead of the five that we did the first time, we just split it to three and two, but not have them.
$2 is just going to go to heating, cooling, electric, and ordinary maintenance of our current facility. That $3, if you turn the page, 1/30, you're back at under D, we're going to segregate that into fund, and we can only use that bylaw for the construction, reconstruction, renovation of, or adaptive reuse of the structure for courthouse. So that's just one of the citizens that are waiting for it until we need our future plans.
It'll take a whole lot of $2.
Bring a whole lot of $3.
A lot of $3. Yeah, I think it comes from that courthouse committee standing there, and that was, the $3 was the max the judge complied with, we couldn't go over the $3, so they're currently charging $2 currently, so we just, I know with the extra three, just for clarity, rest in the board to help defray some of the costs when we get the courthouse into the future. Jail, into the future. Any other comments from the board? Roll call, Mr. Smith.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board, and I have with me Mr. Chris Limp. We're requesting the board to authorize the Fire Marshal's Office to make an application for the Fire Prevention and Safety Grant. This is a grant that comes over about a month's year through the federal firefighter assistance grant. It is part of something that's been authorized since 2005 through Congress. The purpose of this grant is that we're asking to allow us to apply for two deputy fire marshals, where we will be eventually, probably we're having to replace one a couple of years from now, and so that way we'll have one position in the end that we'll be adding. During this time, we'll be training both of the, whoever we get, provided we get this grant. It's something that we have a pretty good feeling about, it's going to, we have some good data, unfortunate data, because anytime there's a death by fire, that's unfortunate. So again, I don't want to minimize or mitigate the side of that, but we have, and we're asking, because this particular grant, we're only going to have to put up with a 5% match per year, and that's non-binding, we don't have to keep this grant, so that's also in our favor as well. So we're asking for the application and authority of $269,000, which will cost a little over $5,000, about $6,000 a year, holding position. So the rest of that will come from the state and from federal, from the federal.
Any questions from the board? I just have, one, is the grant perpetual?
So we're asking for a two-year grant, that's the most we can go for, so, and by that time, it's our hopes that, you know, one of the positions that we have today, we'll probably retire by that time, and so this is really going to be adding just one position in the future, if it is. That's what we're trying to do.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, board's pleasure.
Chairman, I believe that we authorize Fire Marshal's Office to apply for this grant? Second.
Motion made by Mr. Scares, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Smith.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, and I don't know if you got to go far or not, this is actual duty to do. We give you Department Emergency Service Supplement, Local Emergency Management Planning Grant.
Yes, sir. So we were notified last month for the application process to where we can ask the state for some funding. We looked at last year's money that we had left for four-for-life funds, and we're looking also within our existing budget where we're wanting to go and apply for, basically it's a $10,000 grant, and to be able to do this, we will hopefully be able to provide, and I was looking to see if the gentleman here, one of the fighter officers, he's already gone, but Special Operations Team, we have a trailer that we have provided them, and they're going to be able to outfit the trailer with some mass casualty equipment through this grant if we're successful. So we're hoping that we can get this grant through the state, it's a pretty good shot because a high priority is mass casualty. So this is the application that we're asking for, it's going to allow us to put in a little additional extra funds as well as, it's a 50-50 grant, so we have to, we have to match it, so we're asking for, for the authorization to apply this, we have a short window that to put in.
Any questions from the board?
I see any we can use in kind.
That's correct. We're going to be doing it as much as we can. There you go. Yes, sir, we're going to look at how it was used by Mr. Slim or anybody else that he has on this staff, or we can count towards in kind matching.
Any other questions? Board's pleasure.
Chairman, I make a motion to authorize the Department of Emergency Management to proceed with grant application request.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Lawber. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
All right. At 27, 20, 20, 17, 20, 18, Ms. Kim Vanderheide.
Yes, these are the budget amendments that you all presented this afternoon at your work session, and basically it's a potential list of transfers that are being recommended to be moved to the contingency line item in the budget. This by no means will cut the money from the budget, the monies will be available if the need arises to pull them from contingencies. So we're offering you this list at an amount, not to exceed $396,800, but certainly that can be adjusted if you also choose. So that is, coming as a recommendation to you all tonight.
Any questions from the board?
I'd like to make a statement, we discussed this at the work session, a lot of discussion concerning this matter.
Yeah, it was discussed and bred ideas. Any other comments or questions from the board? Board's pleasure.
I have a question.
Okay.
I hope this is an appropriate question. For the listing that has come before us, does the vote have to be all-inclusive, or can there be any carve-outs of that?
Do you mind?
You can make a substitute motion to withdraw some items or something if that's what you desire. Any other questions? Okay, board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we deny the request to approve the budget transfer.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, any discussion? Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call, Mr. Smith.
We have some discussion.
Okay, Dr. Miller.
I make a substitute motion. We approve the listing with the exception of carve-out of the constitutional officers.
Have a substitute motion, we have a second. Second, we have a second, the motion back. Any other discussion? I just have one comment. I'm not, I'm not going to vote to deny this motion. I think it needs, probably needs some work, but I know that there's financial issues within this county, we're not taking in as much revenue as we are expenses, and we must come to that reality, and this is a move that did we work as well together as we should have, probably not, but I don't think there's any ill will or ill intent with this or trying to handicap anybody. I just think it's, we need better communication, but to say as a whole that this is a bad idea and throw it out is not correct either, so I'm not going to support denying this completely. I want my constitutional officers to know, 100% support you all, I don't want to tie your hands, I don't want to keep you from being able to spend the money when you need the money, that's not the case at all, and we certainly don't want to tie anybody's hands, but we've got to work together to get our situation better. I don't want to always rely on tax increase to correct our problems, so it's just about controlling and having better oversight of the budget and keeping us better informed, in my view. So I'm not going to vote to deny this, so. Roll call, Mr. Smith. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Well, ever since this was proposed, I've been thinking about this a lot, it weighs heavy on me, and I've talked about constitutional officers. In the last five budgets, I voted against four, I did vote for last year, but we haven't been willing to cut, and we've got deficit budgets that help get us in the place we are, and when I saw this, I'm like, now we're trying to correct what we want to do, we've got to start cutting in budget time, and I think it's obvious is why we can't get together better, we've got to do our job on those budgets and get a balanced budget, no doubt about it. I mean, I just saw this as retroactive instead of proactive, going back, trying to cut budget. I mean, to my knowledge, we never cut a budget like this mid-year. We give them a budget, now we're taking it back, that's, that's been on my brain, I just get it out publicly, I just, I think we need to start addressing it. Budget time, it's hard to say no, but that's what we've got to start doing when we do budgets. Just my take.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I don't see it as personally as cutting the budget, the budget's still there, available, Ms. Vanderheide has indicated that, it's just a matter of having in one pot versus the other, and I just think it's a mistake for us not to have our oversight on everyone. If we'd have left the constitutional officers out, I would have been fine with that, I think they're certainly more capable of managing the whole budget, so, but I think collectively we thought the whole thing out, it was wrong. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say that this money's going into the contingency fund and with the intention of us having some cash on hand, I would assume until the end of the year. Same token, the organizations that's having this money taken away, they're going to have the ability to come back if they need it, and I just, I think, tagging on with Mr. Farmer, we need to start cutting now, I mean, we've gotten ourselves, I feel like we've gotten ourselves into a hole, and we need to start working these financial issues now on top of when we get into the next year's budget, so I'm probably going to vote against this motion as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
And I have a question, maybe from Ms. Vanderheide, but regardless of how tonight's vote goes, doesn't Mr. Smith still have the authority to move 20, up to 20,000? I think there's only
Or 25.
It's 25.
Up to 20,000? Regardless of how we vote tonight?
Okay. Can we brief? The motion is to deny.
To deny.
Okay, so if you voted yes, you voted to deny. Roll call, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Barb?
Yes.
Mr. Farm?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
No.
Mr. Davis?
No.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Warren?
No.
There's no motion on the table. Someone wants to make a motion affirmative, but it's passed, it goes through the same process again. Right now, staff has no direction as to what to do with these budget adjustments.
Board's pleasure.
I make a motion that we pass the transfer to contingency with the exception of the constitutional offices.
I have a second. Second, second, I can know, I think it was your motion earlier. I think it was motion earlier. You denied it, I can say, sorry, I can know, yeah, sorry. Any discussion over?
I was still wondering, the fire rescue one, that's still in it, correct? Be cut, okay.
I'd like to point out that if that's
Yeah, just for clarity while they're looking at it. Just as Mr. Farmer mentioned, we can do what we want to, but by policy, our county administrator could transfer the money over, with the exception of four line items. Two of those are fire and rescue, one of them's a jail, and there's one other. Four of them, I think.
At the 20 mark in school, but maybe 25.
Maybe it's only three, it's only three. So
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to withdraw my original motion.
Okay.
And alter an amended motion.
Dr. Miller, you're withdrawing your second. He wants to make an amended motion.
Down, withdraw, second.
Okay.
I make a motion that we pass the transfer to contingency with the exception of the constitutional offices and the fire and rescue lines.
Second. Dr. Miller, second's out. Okay, any discussion, no? Okay. Once again, just for board clarity, we're doing this, but policy says all the three of them can be moved anywhere, just for policy clarity, just for clarity for the public in the board, okay? Roll call, Mr. Flipper.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstone?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
And Mr. Warren?
Yes. Okay. I don't ask you. Ms. Vanderhyde, set public hearing for master lease financing program.
Yes, this is the financing program that you all approved the resolution for back on your January 16, 2018 meeting. We successfully closed on that financing on January the 30th, and a total amount of And that was to cover two types of projects, tax-exempt projects totaling $1,755,000, and taxable projects totaling $1,050,000. Because these items exceed our 1% adjustment that we can make to our budget, we will have to hold a public hearing to hear citizen input on this. So we are requesting that you all approve that, setting that public hearing for your next meeting of March the 20th.
Chairman, I make a motion to set a public hearing on March 20, 2018, meaning to hear citizen input on the proposed budget amendments to add $2,883,000 to the fiscal year 2017, 2018 budget.
Second.
Motion made by Blackstock, second by Mr. Davis, any discussion? Seeing, roll call, Mr. Flipper.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstone?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. We're down to item 12, appointments, do we have any questions? I don't see a way here.
Andrew, first, the city.
The tip you had, yes, I want to handle that visit. Cheryl went home, we think, they flew. Oh, I'm sorry, I was standing there for her. And basically, the chairman of the CNPT resigned because of changes in job duties, and they have recommended a person to replace her, and also a second person in that position if she's in those positions, and has it altered it. And I believe the Pittsman County Schools will cheer to see and speak to you until they elect a new chairman. So we've got one person leaving, they, their recommendations have altered it, and we have it standing in chair too. I'll leave me.
Board's pleasure. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve Natalie Whitlow, RN, as the health department designated to the Pittsman County Community Hospital Management Team, and Catherine Walker, RN, as Ms. Whitlow's alternate with effective date of February 20, 2018, and Monica Karavinik, that's not a Pennsylvania candidate, as a private, provable representative with an effect date, effective date of February 20, 2018.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, second by Mr. Palmer, any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Flipper.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstone?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. Now, it's from work session. Do we have any?
We just have one, we just need a motion for county staff to advertise for public hearing at the next meeting with board supervisory ballot changes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we advertise a public hearing next board supervisory level meeting to amend the Pittsman County ballot. Second, Pittsman County Board of Supervisors ballot.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, second by Mr. Davis, any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Flipper.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstone?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. We're down to board announcements. We start with Mr. Palmer.
Hi, Mr. Palmer. Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll just remind the public that the Gretna Volunteer Fire Department is hosting a spaghetti dinner fundraiser this Saturday at their, their station at 5:00 PM, and while speaking on the matter of fire and rescue, just want to say thank you to all our, our local men and women who are out there serving, protecting our, our counties and communities every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Mr. Blackstock?
I just reminded the public that the volunteer fire department and the women volunteer fire department are in the midst of construction additions to their firehouses that are much needed in both places, and I'm sure that they could help you with a tax deductible receipt for any donation that you might help with at each firehouse. Both inner firehouse, or if you want to write one of them, but.
Mr. Scares?
Hi, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir, I want to recognize Ms. Flipper, Kayla, Scott Bud, Mr. Greg Sides for his mitigation on that profit, on that property. Our county administrator, our county attorney, Kim Vanderhyde, and Ms. Lizette Jordan that has left. I couldn't, I couldn't do my job if I didn't have you guys in place. I do want to thank you for that, and I am at the utmost your disposal. So thank you for your input, and what you mean to us, though quite often you probably never get told, but that doesn't go just to you guys, but all the staff as well. Ms. Tu, she's over at the library, appreciate her input, she has some certain oversights in the county as well, I thank her, and Mr. Fitzgerald. And I also want to thank my friends, law enforcement, who expect me to feed them every week, but I thank you for all, yeah, thank you for all you guys do, and all of our news media personnel, I thank you all that have a part. And then I also thank Mr. Angina, that wrote a nice article about getting people involved as far as local politics were concerned. I appreciate him showing up quite often to give, even give his opinions to many of the board members. I do appreciate that, as well as the other young man who spoke, the former school teacher there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Dr. Miller? Roll call, Mr. Flipper. Thank you. I only have two quick things. Thank you all very much for putting up with my congestion and head cold all night. I thank the board for covering my back as I tried to get through this tonight, and I appreciate it very much. I also want to ask that you continue to remember in your thoughts and prayers, students in Florida, and those families, what a tragedy. And, but for these gentlemen in the back, we can always be a target too. So, thank you all for the great job you do in protecting us, and protecting our, which back, last segment, which is those children. We appreciate it very much. And we sleep a lot safer tonight because we had you all, and we want you to know without a shadow of a doubt, we support you 100%. So, we thank you very much for everything you do.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith, do you have anything?
Yes, sir, thank you very much. Next, a week from Tuesday, a week from today, excuse me, we will be presenting the FYI 2019 proposed budget, and if you thought this evening was hard, cutting back some expenses in the current year, next, next week's going to be a lot, lot worse. We are in a precarious position. We will have, by my estimation, less than a month's of free cash in the bank on June 30th of this year. And the purpose for proposing the mid-year cuts is to boost that number as much as possible at the end of June 30. We appropriated a pool of $3 million of fund balance, which is our savings account, to make this year work. We are going to garner about $1.5 million of new cash through reassessment, which means we're still $1.4 million short, just to bring ourselves whole in the current year. That doesn't exclude the many needs of fire and rescue folks, the unbelievable needs that are backlogged at the landfill. Doesn't set aside any money for economic development, which we must have to grow, and the MVP project that you approved tonight will certainly help in that economic development growth. But it is a very difficult financial time for Pittsman County, and I cannot overemphasize the struggles that we've had the last three months, especially the last two, putting together a comprehensive package to show the board a potential way out over the next four years. There will be drastic cuts that cause much pain on this board supervisors, among our employees, among our citizens, and among the people that receive our services. And I cannot be more sober about the difficulty that you will have balancing this budget without a significant tax increase. It will be very, very difficult, and if you can do it, I'm very worried that we'll find ourselves in this place next year. I think it's a multi-year plan to get out, I think it's a solid plan. We're still waiting on just some last revenue numbers from Commissioner of Revenue, some came in today, but a week from today, we will present what we will call a financial roadmap back to stability. And I think we can do it, I'm extremely optimistic, and I think the plan is sound, but there will be many, many, many operational expenditure changes, i.e. reductions, and many revenue increases in order to make that work. So, thank you for the confidence you've placed in the staff in putting this proposal together. We do promise it is well thought out, and it is a way forward that is reasonable, and accomplishes your goals of growth, of support for our emergency services, and for basically a better day and more stable future for the county's children. Proud to call Pittsman County home, proud to invest in the Gretna District, County Gretna District, and I will be one of those taxpayers along with you, which will get most likely a higher bill next year, but I look forward to presenting it, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you very much.
Mr. Palmer?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we enter into closed session.
Second.
I'll ask the public to.
I will now certify the meeting. Be it resolved that at the business meeting of the Pittsman County Board of Supervisors on Tuesday, February 20, 2018, the board hereby certifies by reporting vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and the five motions authorized in the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. If any member believes that there was a departure from the requirements of the code, he shall so state prior to the vote indicating the substance of the departure. The statement shall be recorded in the minutes of the board. Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes!
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?